I'd like to call the, uh, got the right date? Got the wrong day, Eric. Like to call the April 8th, 2019 meeting of the Town and Niskuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission Order. Mr. Twitty, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Here.
Mr. Scrappy Tennis?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Mr. McPartlin?
Here.
Mr. Diarpino?
Here.
Mr. Oster?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here. Uh, for information, I just wanted to announce that, uh, under new business resolution number one, uh, resolution for 1380 Van Antwerp Road, uh, is being tabled or pulled tonight at the request of the applicant. So we will not be, uh, uh, you know, acting on that resolution tonight. Uh, but, um, you know, we can still take any comments during privilege of the floor tonight. And, uh, we may have some discussion later on, uh, under, uh, section nine, under reports. We may talk about it a little bit if people want to stick around, okay? But that'll be pulled. Uh, next we have the approval of the minutes from the March 25th, 2019 meeting that were included in your packet. Have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, moved by Mr. McPartlin and seconded by Mr. Khan. Uh, any changes or correction instruments?
Yes. Under new business, the third paragraph, Ms. Gold said she was concerned that the storage of tires, about the storage of tires, I was concerned that the wording of the resolution precluded the storage and we just noted that it would not. We already accepted that.
So what's your suggestion for change there?
Uh, so we said, uh, the wording of the resolution.
What, the resolution as worded, precluded?
Yes.
Yeah, precluded the storage of tires.
And then on page 14, line 518. I recommended, rather than consistent or whatever, but that one member of the Architecture Review Board should be resident, just an average citizen. I believe Mr. Oster agreed with that point. And up above that.
Yes.
I was referring to the typo when 516. That's not the sentence I had in mind. The one I was concerned about was number two on the draft, uh, draft wording. It was very simple that, uh, the town's Architecture Review Board should consist of residents with substantial work experience. And the wording is actually missing. I didn't notice that at the time. It feels of architecture of design. I believe the of was supposed to be or. So it'd be architecture or design.
Okay, you got to help me out here. So on 516, your change on 516, you said?
Yeah, because I was referencing the second part of the draft on the ARB. And I just thought that it would say of architecture of design was meant to be of architecture or design. Simple typo. And we only went then, and that's why hardly anybody noticed it.
So was there a change on, uh, line 518?
Yeah, and then we would say Ms. Ms. Gold recommended that one member of the ARB should be a resident without an architectural background to prevent the ARB's review process from shutting out the lay public. And then we could add, Mr. Oster agreed, if you want to add that.
That's fine, that's fine. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other corrections or, uh, changes to the minutes? Anybody else? Okay, I have none. Uh, we've had some, uh, reasonable modifications. So I just guess we call for, uh, all those in favor of the minutes as modified. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so we'll accept the minutes as modified. All right, thank you. All right, so we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is open for any planning and zoning matters in the Town and Niskuna. Please come to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record.
Daryl Bray, 1420 Van Antwerp Road. Um, I'm pleased to hear that the 1380 Van Antwerp Road has been tabled for this evening. Um, I felt like it was a very, um, bad idea. Um, and I was disappointed with the previous building that was done on the property, um, when it was subdivided originally. And, um, it just seemed to me that it would be wrong to continue that. Real devastation of that property. And, um, I think that everybody knows it's wrong. And I think that you guys, in memory, I think the three of you who are on the board, that know that it was something that was not intended to be subdivided further. Um, the purchaser didn't do their due diligence. And then when it's something that's wrong, it's wrong. And, um, I know that you guys spend a lot of time thinking about these things and you're taking them very seriously. It's not a question of the zoning or the code. It's a question of what's right and wrong. And you guys take a lot of time to think about it. And there's a lot of nights that you're here for hours and hours thinking about it. And if it was just about the code, that wouldn't be required. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Charles Chuck Petrowski. I am at 1336 Stanley Lane in Niskuna. Uh, and I would like to speak on the 1380 Van Antwerp, um, major minor subdivision. Uh, first of all, thank you for your due diligence and deliberation on the issue. We greatly appreciate your time and energy, not only on this committee, but getting outside into our neighborhood and experiencing our neighborhood. Uh, one of the key issues, of course, was character and is always character of neighborhood. And it's also a small part, uh, of a bigger issue, which is the character of Niskuna. Three of those components are basically ecology, history, and compatibility. Uh, those are three things I think you all took into account and I hope will continue to take into account. But also, it's three other things. It's integrity, trust, and respect. And in the Woodcrest neighborhood, those are three things we take very seriously. And I hope you also take those characteristics into account when you think about character of our community and the character of Niskuna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Ruder, 2505 McGovern Drive. I've spoken previously about, uh, 1380 Van Antwerp Road, uh, proposal. And, uh, I just wanted to, uh, come today and say, uh, thank you to, uh, Mr. Hess for, uh, the, for the, um, really thorough analysis that you did of the legal issues around, uh, around this development, but really about what the planning board is here for. And, uh, that it isn't just to, you know, read what's written in the paper, on paper, because sometimes that's ambiguous. Sometimes that doesn't tell the whole story. And really to exercise your discretion where appropriate. And, uh, you know, obviously, there's a bit of interpretation to any set of rules. So, uh, I, I thought that Mr. Hess really laid out the issues before you, uh, with regard to this, this development, but also to, uh, to a lot of proposals that are in front of you very nicely. And, uh, recommend very strongly to, uh, to consult that and really think through, uh, very strongly if this does, uh, get put before, get, come up to a vote for a vote, uh, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Tim Serantonio and I live at 2509 Antonia Drive. Uh, this is in relation to the, uh, 1380 Van Antwerp Road, uh, subdivision. And, uh, there's really nothing that I can add than that's already been covered pretty extensively other than the fact that, uh, you know, it's not just the people who are in this room, but we are also representing at least 28 people who have signed an electronic petition that should have been delivered to Ms. Robertson's. Okay, good, you got it. So, there you go.
They've been forwarded onto the board as well.
Fantastic. So just wanted to double check that. And, uh, if we do need kind of a more collated report of all those names and pieces of information, we are happy to provide that. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tom Hodgkins. I live on Rosendale Road. I'd like to address the Van Brinken Estate. Um, it, it is, uh, built in 1826. It has significant historical value to the town, to the county, to the owners. And I think that once they do list it on the National Register of Historic Places, I, I think that's, uh, there's, I think they list things that have less historic value than that, than the, uh, than Brinken Estate. Uh, they can, you know, they qualify for some generous tax credits and, uh, and, you know, capitalize on that value as, as a historic estate. And I think one great use for that would be like a little, uh, B and B. People living in the carriage house, uh, people, you have a little cafe in one of the, uh, the deck there. I think, uh, that would be really nice. And that, that way you'd, you'd use the value, capitalize on the value. The owners will benefit. That's where the real value is, into something, a little tiny B and B. That's where the value is, not in some obnoxious extinction development. You know, I, I just don't get it. So, anyway, that's, that's my idea. I think I stand with the dozens and dozens of my neighbors who, uh, who are opposed to this. And I know you make the right decision. I, I did want, I know you're not talking about the Architectural Review Board, uh, tonight, but I do want to, um, I don't know where that is, in this process, whether it's moved on or whatnot. But I think, um, and I wasn't, I don't know everything that you talked about in here, about this, but I think with a board like this, there's, there's the potential for conflicts of interest. Um, where you can have somebody on the board and they say, well, you know, I think you should fix this, but, you know, I can do it for you for less. Or, or I can refer you to a friend and my friend will help you out. So I think you really need some conflict of interest provisions in here. Uh, I don't know, at some point, or, I don't know, you can look into it, that, I don't know, maybe there's overriding provisions that would prevent that, or I, I'm not really sure, exactly how the existing conflict of interest provisions would apply to this board. But I think you need that because there is, um, an easy way to self-deal. So that's my concern about that, having kind of seen a lot of corruption in the state, even at the local level. Last, uh, um, topic is the, uh, Odehak Campus. Uh, I went down to the Avery Library at Columbia University and examined, uh, the archives there pertaining to the Odehak Campus. And so I have a lot of documentation. Um, I have took hundreds of photographs and I'm going to work with Columbia Library and the town supervisor to try to get those so they can be used for research and study. And, and everybody can kind of look at them and understand kind of what is there on the site. Because I think that really that's, you know, if we're talking about like smart growth, you know, understanding what we have is part of smart growth and reuse of that. So I think that's the base and understanding what's there and then kind of building off of that. You know, what if, you know, we wanted to, you know, have, have this space as, you know, part business or part residence? But I also think part of this should be a broader conversation because talking about residential, you know, that's, those kids go to, uh, South County School District. So I think, you know, you know, those people should maybe be part of this conversation too. And, you know, borders, city is connected, so maybe get some of those people in this conversation too. So it's, it's a, it's a key site and there's a lot of players involved. So I think, you know, taking a step back, which is, I heard last time or is in your notes, it's a good idea. Gather more information and we can maybe bring some more people in to kind of look at all the different angles and how they all intersect. And we can try to get a better process, better result in the long term. So I think, you know, reuse and get, get that site being used for whatever purposes is in the long-term interest of everybody. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor, anyone else? Any planning and zoning matters at all?
Hi, I'm Danielle Jovanone. I'm a resident at 2488 Hilltop Road. Um, and I also just wanted to voice my opinion about the, the 1380 Van Antwerp development. You know, when I saw the three houses go up, I, I guess I wasn't completely surprised, you know, given such a big property. But to hear that there's another three plans is just, um, really disappointing to me. I moved here from New York City about three or four years ago. Uh, my husband, uh, is actually a partner with Mike Holmes, who is the person, the family who sold it. And Becky is actually the one who gave me a tour of Ms.'s funeral when we were looking to see if we wanted to settle here. And I remember sitting in her driveway, right in front of that carriage house, and being, you know, like really taken by the charm of the neighborhood and her house in particular. And it really made an impression on me. Uh, so when we were looking for houses, I happened to see a house available on that block and just kind of fell in love with the neighborhood in part because of that entry into the neighborhood. Um, it's, it's truly historic. Um, the old trees, the actual house and carriage house itself, um, really kind of add a lot of value to the neighborhood. And, you know, the three houses that went up, uh, I, you know, I would, I would argue they also detract currently, but to have three more, if I were, if I were to enter the neighborhood with these six new houses, I would think I was entering a new, new housing development and not a beautiful old Niskuna neighborhood with historical houses. Um, I understand there's a mix of houses in the neighborhood, but, um, as the, kind of the, the launching point into the neighborhood and to have all these new houses that look exactly like grouped together, um, I think really detracts from the value of the whole neighborhood. Especially the fact that all the trees are going to be wiped out. I know they say they're going to save some, but we know how that goes. And so, you know, I want to encourage you guys to continue in your line of thought and hopefully standing up and opposing, um, this development. I just think that it would really be a detriment to the neighborhood to have any more houses like that and to also take away that beautiful carriage house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, so no one else, no one else. We'll close privilege of the floor. We'll move on on the agenda. We have no unfinished business tonight. We do have one resolution under new business. And that's, uh, resolution number two on the agenda, resolution 2019-09, a resolution for site plan approval of a food truck at 3497 State Street. Mr. Twitty, would you please call, read the resolution?
One of the purposes of the meeting was to take action on the application for a site plan review. Whereas Kharam Shazad has made an application to the planning board for site plan review of, of parking a food truck at 3497 State Street, as shown on a site plan entitled Site Plan Z and H Petroleum, Inc., 3497 State Street, Town of Niskuna, County of Schenectady, State of New York, received by the Planning Department on March 29, 2019. And whereas the zoning classification of the property is CH Commercial Highway. And whereas the planning board referred this application to the Town Superintendent of Water, Sewer and Engineering, the Fire District Chief and the Chief of Police, and there were no objections to the proposal. And whereas this board has carefully reviewed the proposal and by this resolution does set forth its decision year on, now therefore be it hereby resolved that this, that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds that the site plan referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and hereby approves this site plan and tenant space as shown on a site plan entitled Site Plan Z and H Petroleum, Inc., 349, 3497 State Street, Town of Niskuna, County of Schenectady, State of New York, received by the Planning Department on March 29, 2019 with the following condition. One, pursuant to Town Board Resolution 2001-59 and Planning Board Resolution 2001-10, the owner of the property should, must submit in a building permit for erecting a welcome to Niskuna sign designed to the satisfaction of the Town Board prior to any additional operation on site.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Uh, moved by Mr. Oster for adoption. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Scrappy Tennis. Uh, the applicant or representative of the applicant present? Have anybody present on this tonight? Could you please just come to the microphone and state your name, uh, for the record? In case we have any questions, if we have any discussion at all?
Hi, my name is Kharam Shazad. The, the 3497 State Street, I am on there on the, on the Halal Food Truck.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess Laura, this did go in front of the, uh, the police took a look at this. They're okay with it, is that correct?
Yeah, we referred it to them. We haven't heard anything back, have we? And that means?
Yeah, I took a look, you know, it looks like it doesn't block any sight lines. So, you know, for pulling out or anything, especially if you're heading west. And it doesn't seem to be a problem over there and it looks like a pretty good spot for it and everything. Uh, I was happy to see, Laura, that you include it in the agenda about the, uh, welcome to Niskuna sign. That was a leftover, uh, item from the site plan approval when they renovated at the station some time ago. In fact, I can't remember how many years ago it was, Laura, but, uh,
Well, 2001.
2001, and, uh, at the time, there was, um, a purge system for environmental cleanup there. Uh, that was, uh, taking the space where the sign was supposed to go. And there was an agreement at that time that the sign would go in when, when the, uh, environmental purge system, I guess it aerates the hydrocarbons out of the ground. And that was gone to install the sign. So, it never happened, so this is a good way to capture it on a go-forward basis.
Laura, did you contact the owner?
Um, I have not spoken to the owner directly. We do have the note from the owner stating, because I believe that the applicant has already signed a lease with him. Um, and Jeff has reached out to the actual.
Yep, I think, uh, it's Vade Fuels is their name and they're out of Queens. So we sent them a letter letting them know about the situation as far as the, uh, welcome to Niskuna sign back in December, but we haven't heard anything back from them.
Okay. So, um, is this, this will hold up the food truck until they actually come in and get a building permit to put the sign, the way this is written?
That's the way it's written. I mean, we could change it around. We were a little concerned about allowing additional sort of revenue to the place if it
They're expanding the use.
Is a condition from 2001.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's, I know. I, I think we can be a little flexible, but so far, I mean, we reached out in December and we haven't gotten anything back from them.
Wondering if a condition like that makes sense, actually, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of unfair to this applicant.
Right.
But it is a condition of the property owner.
Right.
And I mean, it's still a condition in the 2001 resolution. So you could certainly just leave it in the 2001 resolution and Jeff and I could continue to try and enforce it and separate the two issues.
Important to get positive contact with that owner and tell them that now it's time to act on that resolution. Right? And, um,
So, on the flip side of this, super hard on the enforcement side to get anyone to comply. So, um, this is sort of the limited leverage that we have. And my guess is the owner is taking this guy's calls, but not ours.
Yeah.
So, so I, I agree with the fairness issue, but I really don't know how else to raise this to the level of getting the current owner's attention.
Yeah. No, and I, and, and I'll, I'll speak from my perspective in seeing the, this kind of condition on this application. I think we can, in full recognition that we potentially have a fairness issue, but, um, I think we should entertain that for a little while without it getting to be a complete stumbling block on this.
Yeah.
The, the other thing that I'm, I'm interested is, is the parking on the site, I would imagine people are going to drive to this food truck, right? Because you do have some pedestrian traffic there, but not a lot. So is the parking on site adequate, recognizing the?
It, it, you know, it depends on how busy and how, how good it is, right?
Yeah.
But, uh, it seemed to be reasonable. There's a couple of spots there. It's, it doesn't seem like it's a, I don't know if the thought is people would get fuel or stop in the store and, you know, walk over and grab something, but, um,
I mean, you can park. They're not designated parking spaces, but you can park along the island. And then you've got eight spaces actually under the gas tank. And then you have an additional seven along the building.
Yeah, actually, so i- is there an updated true site plan, not just a proposed map from 2000?
Um, this was the most recent one that we could find and I think we checked it with an aerial, but I can, we did check it with an aerial, I think. But I can actually bring up, there may even be a parking lot adjacent to it.
You mean the Tresco?
The Tresco, yeah.
Parking lot is just right behind it.
Is that a bank?
Yes, to the, to the west.
Okay, so never mind. It's not the greatest adjacent parking lot.
Yep. But there is parking in that lot. It's very, it's walkable.
Is, is it connected?
There's some barrier, but certainly pedestrians could access. Yeah, I think, I think there's a sidewalk there, right? Yeah, there's a sidewalk along State Street. So I, you know, I guess I wasn't too concerned about, I, I thought that you give the applicant the opportunity, give it a shot. Uh, I mean, obviously the business needs to be successful. If it causes problems with people, people getting gas, I mean, they're going to have to self-police themselves to a certain extent, right? If that's, if that's the thought, you know?
I- is there a shoulder there along Route 5?
I see. I get the, I get the.
Would someone be tempted to pull over, park in the shoulder?
No.
No?
No.
Yeah, I mean, I think that will onto the property. Or, yeah, my, my concern is
It looks like it's a race curb.
So wait, can I just, just in terms of the, uh, the pull, the pullout area, is there any logistical issue associated with the fact you're going to have cars pulling out right where the truck is going to be?
Well, I mean, it is in ways, because you, the sidewalks are probably eight feet.
Okay.
So it's probably 16, so and that's
But it's going to be right there, right? In that, in that corner?
Yeah.
So people are going to be getting the food, right, probably in that? I, you know, I'm literally, unfortunately, I'm literally pointing to the, and nobody can, but I'm presuming it, the, the front of it is going to be facing the side of the mobile?
No, he said he wants the front facing State Street, so that people would queue up in the grass.
Would queue up in the grass? Okay.
Yes, because we said you've got to make, you've got to make the truck. So that's really only taking up one parking spot.
I mean, so, so I'm glad that that's what was decided on because having it queue up on a parking spot is not the right thing.
No. Uh-uh.
Right, that's just a
Laura, can I just ask for my identification? This is, so we have a lessee making application for site plan review on behalf of a, of an owner.
Yeah, we do that a lot.
We, don't we have owners more often than not?
No.
No.
We have lessees.
Yeah, almost always.
We have lessees.
Almost always, yeah. Okay, you guys have seen like the owner of Mohawk Commons, like
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Only occasionally when they needed like a sign for their, like leasing space. And I don't think you guys have ever seen the owner of ShopRite.
Yeah, so Mohawk, uh, all right, Petroleum is out of Queens, Laura, is that what you're saying?
Jeff, Jeff has reached out to them a couple of times.
Yeah, Mohawk Petroleum, that's not who I dealt with. Um, I dealt with who's, who was listed as the owner of, in the county registry, it was listed, they were Vade Fuels. That was back in December 2018, so that may have changed Mohawk Petroleum.
So, so it sounds like we need to reach out to this person that gave authority for this, uh, of Mohawk Petroleum. There's a phone number here.
Yeah, we haven't tried it, but we could try it, you know, tomorrow.
All right, so what are we going to do about this condition? Should we strike the condition, leave it as is? I know
Does, does the applicant know about the condition?
I mean, I've tried to communicate it with him.
I called the, I called the person from Mohawk Petroleum and let them know about the condition. And it sounded like
Oh, you called that number?
Yep, and it sounded like they had some knowledge of it, but they thought that the town would be the, uh, party that would erect the sign. Um, so he's kind of getting everything in motion to get the sign up, but I'll, I'll check back in with him.
Hmm, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Jeff.
All right, so it sounds like the wheels are turning and we
Yeah.
All right. You understand what's going on there with, with the, the sign? Yeah, it was just a leftover item that hasn't been resolved. And, uh, this is an opportunity to make sure it's apparent, you know, again, and try to get it taken care of. Uh, there was a lot of work done on that property before when it was remodeled. And, uh, I think new pumps were put in back and that was just one of the conditions. All right? Do you have any questions at all?
So, do you guys want to put in a condition that the, uh, when, the sales window would face State Street? Just to be safe, in case?
Yeah, I think so.
In case a building's pictures out there, that's the easiest way to enforce it if you've got it right now.
That was a good, uh,
I was trying to look at the picture. There is enough room on that, uh, yeah, there's enough shoulder there, right?
Yeah, I think so.
This is seasonal, right?
Um, no, actually, he said he would be open all year round.
In the winter, I would not think that space would be pedestrian friendly as much as the parking space would.
That's true.
Well, if you shovel it, you know, you can put, you can put a mat down or something like that, you know?
But he could, he could put pavers down.
Yeah, or something like that, yeah.
But even more reason to add something to the resolution about it.
Okay, so, um,
We would say
So what do you call that? Like the, uh, service window of the truck shall face State Street, you know?
Service, sales.
Customer.
Customer window.
Service window, yeah. To have a motion to, okay, so I'll make a motion that we amend the resolution to add the second condition regarding the customer service window facing State Street. Do you have a second on that?
So move it, Chairman.
All right, second by Mr. Diopino, who's, hey, this time, Mr. Scrubby Dennis. All right, all right, so we have a modified resolution. Or we take the vote, I guess we do show hands on the resolution being modified. All's in favor of modified and the condition, and that's unanimous. Okay? All right, any other comments, questions, or concerns? No? Okay, so we'll call the, uh, roll call on the modified, uh, resolution as modified with the second condition.
Mr. LaFum?
Aye.
Mr. Scruby Dennis?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartland?
Aye.
Mr. Diopino?
Aye.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye, resolution is adopted. Okay, thank you. If you've got any questions, and I can, uh, give the planning office a call, okay? Talk to Laura or Mr. Twitty, okay? Mr. Robinson, Ms. Robinson or Mr. Twitty? Okay?
And, and Laura, you know, one of the things I was thinking about is the fact that maybe we should think about adding something about food trucks into the code.
Yeah, I think Elena is, we were talking, Elena may have been working on something. We're gonna see if we can resurrect that, resurrect that. Um, and I did just wanna note that it, it must submit a building permit, so it's not like the sign has to be erected before he starts. Um, they just have to have wheels in motion. Hopefully that'll be a good compromise.
Okay. All right, so, uh, next up, we have a discussion, as we had nothing listed, but of course, we can talk a bit about thirteen eighty Van Antwerp code. Uh, Mr. McPartland, would you like to kick it off, or?
Uh, sure, so I trust that, um, all the members have, have read the, uh, opinion that was offered by the town attorney, and also the, uh, recommendation that, um, the planning, um, from the CAC, that, uh, that there be a, uh, positive declaration, um, um, for the seeker review. Um, I think these are, in, in light of, um, some of the guidance we're receiving from the town attorney, uh, regarding, um, our, our ability to address the historic structures on the property and, and, um, take that into consideration when, uh, when evaluating this subdivision, as well as the, the, um, possibility of applying some of the standards, uh, normally reserved for a major subdivision to what we're technically considering this minor subdivision. And I think, I think there's a, there's a much higher burden than, than was originally, um, expected, maybe, but on behalf of members of the board, but also certainly the applicant. I had the ability to, I had the, um, I had an opportunity to speak with Lou Leacy for a, a short, a short telephone conversation last Friday, and I just explained to him, you know, that, um, I guess it's, it was important to me personally that he knew some of the concerns that are being raised by his neighbors, being that he's now resident of this neighborhood, and, uh, you know, it seemed that he had, um, some idea about some of those concerns being raised. I, I relayed some of the, um, major concerns about the way that the, um, single, the three single-family homes that were erected, um, were done, as well as the proposal to remove the carriage house, and just a lot of, uh, concerns raised about, um, drainage and groundwater and, um, just the cumulative impact of the development on this, this whole parcel. So, um, in light of that, it sounds as though he's at least willing to abate some of those concerns, and, um, potentially, we could be seeing a different, different plan in front of us the next time, um, we, we hear from the applicant, um, but I, I haven't heard anything from him since Friday.
Yeah, I, he called me just before the meeting to, uh, notify me that the, uh, request to pull the resolution from the agenda, um, basically didn't add anything else except for that he may, uh, go out there and actually mark the homes, the footprints of the homes where they'd be located. So, you know, I told him my concern about the trees too, and that, you know, you know, practice is, it's, it's good to try to save them, but sometimes it doesn't seem like it works out, so could we actually put the, uh, spikes in the ground where the houses would be proposed, so we could actually see, you know, a better visual of how it lays out and what the impact would be? And he thought that, uh, he would have his engineer do that, so. Because right now, we still have an application in front of us, it's been tabled, but we have an application for, you know, the three lot minor subdivision, which is, by the way, two additional homes. I heard three, it'd be, uh, maintaining the existing home and adding two additional on the corner there. So I believe, uh, um, his path would probably be to go off and try to address all the concerns. All this information, which is fantastic, is available on the website, including for the public and the applicant, so they could see the, the, uh, the work that the, um, town attorneys and the planning office did, uh, putting together their, uh, agenda statement, and, uh, as was stated, uh, Mr. Hess, um, his, uh, his letter, uh, basically, uh, giving us some, uh, information to help make our decision. So all that's been available. So I'm not sure where it's gonna lead, um, I think what's, what it means to us is basically we have a pause, uh, until the applicant comes back. Uh, maybe we can hopefully have a meeting, sit down, talk to him, you know, bring him in, but, uh, right now, uh, we still have a sketch plan out there that could be modified and come back to us.
So I just, I just wanna jump in, although they did send us a formal letter, which I will forward on to you guys tomorrow, I can pass it along. I, I would just be careful, it doesn't seem like there's any interest in changing the sketch plan. I would, I would just be, I wouldn't wanna like put misinformation out, and I, I haven't even had a chance to look through all these. I mean, they literally came into our department like before five, so, I mean, we haven't even had a chance to look at it, I haven't even fully read it, um, but.
Well, to, to that end, Laura, one thing, one concrete commitment that I think I was able to get out of him is he, he said that he understands the importance of preserving the carriage house.
That is in the letter, I did see that, that they'd be willing to move the carriage house to the, to the, um.
Well, that would be a change.
That would be a change to the sketch.
Yeah, but I, I don't think we're talking about changes in lots or anything like that.
Well, yeah, it's a change to the sketch plan, so.
A little bit.
Right, but I thought, as I'm just literally looking at those words, the current owner cannot guarantee the relocation will be successful, the structure's in poor condition, so.
That's why, that's why I read it too.
Yeah, so I'm like looking at right now, like moving the, moving that around, it doesn't show, what does that, you know, what does that get you, and things could probably fall apart, so.
Right, so anyway, I'm just saying, there's a lot of information that we just got today, and, you know, you guys have a lot of information. I do wanna caution you, um, when you see building footprints on subdivisions, those are just placeholders, so you can put a placeholder of like a twenty-foot by, you know, forty-foot building or whatever, but when a building permit comes in, there's nothing that holds them to that footprint, except for setbacks. So, I mean, you can mark out kind of a, a small postage stamp-like house, which is what you usually see on subdivisions, but then what actually gets built, you know, can have a side-loading garage, it can have whatever, you guys could look at conditions that maybe mitigate some factors, but just having stakes in the ground is ne- not necessarily indicative of what an actual building permit would be issued to that property without some kind of additional conditions inside.
Understand, but anything we can get to help with is helpful.
It's always good to have stuff in the ground, for sure, absolutely.
Anything we can get to help.
But that is not like, you know, in concrete, when those things go out, that's.
Understand, you gotta build it within the building envelope.
Mm-hmm.
So it depends on what house, you know, that people wanna build, as long as it fits within the building envelope. I understand.
Patrick, just a quick question, if you don't mind, sorry to interrupt your reading, but in your conversation, Mr. Lessie, did he acknowledge any association with the three homes that were built by Beacon Homes?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
He, he also stated that he made some statement about his original intent to keep a lot of the trees that were on those parcels, so I think he was, you know, I, I sort of, that didn't necessarily agree with my understanding of how those properties came to be clear-cut, but, uh, you know, I think we have a little case of, you know, he said, she said, sort of, because, you know, he, he was saying that he was instructed to clear a bunch of trees, and, um, he, he wanted to, he said he wanted to place the, um, power lines, he wanted to keep the power lines above ground, uh, but, but locating them underground necessitated the removal of a significant number of trees.
That is what those trees are that he's referring to, though, is there was like a pine tree on the corner of Van Antwerp and, um, the southern, more southern one, yeah, and because they were locating utilities underground there, they couldn't keep that tree that was in the right-of-way, so when he was putting power lines in the right-of-way, there was some clearing that was initially done, but that's not related to the three homes that go in. Yeah.
There's no power that runs between those homes on the interior of that development.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure how that.
That's what, that's what clearing means to me, and.
Yeah, I mean.
Not the edge, but the, the interior.
Yeah, I was just, I think it was an indication to me that, you know, he's, he's willing to offer any reason, uh, for, for why that, that development and the, and the, the clear cutting of trees on those three parcels should somehow be viewed in a different light than what the proposal before us now, so.
Okay, well, the, the planning office just received that tonight, so we haven't even seen, you know, this letter, so we'll get this out.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody.
Email to you tomorrow morning.
Email tomorrow, so we can take a look.
Yeah, and I'll take a look and see what these are and email them as well.
Again, the information was available to the applicant, everything that, you know, the packet, same packet that we've all seen that the public has, and so apparently, they've had an opportunity to, to at least write some kind of a statement based on that, which I haven't even read yet myself, so. I don't think they want to take a look or what.
I quickly scanned that, Laura, it looks like on the last paragraph, they allude to not being able to make contact with our engineering department.
That, I mean, that is the case, our engineering department has been very busy, and I've been over there a couple of times to see if they can just reach out, and they have, there's been some phone, phone tag back and forth. I think Luigi is also very busy.
Yeah.
Um, but they're trying.
I think, in my opinion, at least to address that so that it's not one additional.
Yeah, I agree.
Grievance, let's have a right, a written communication, um, by email or.
Yeah, we could do that.
Or a letter.
Yes, I just wanna make clear, this actually isn't a letter from the owner, it's a letter from the owner's attorney.
Yeah, it is.
Yep. But again, you know, thank you, Mr. Hess, and thanks, Laura, for the, uh, the agenda statement. So, you know, the items in agenda statement, again, is available to the public and everybody on the website, but, you know, there's some, uh, things that, um, if, if it did come up and if we were to deny it, there's the reasons tonight, you know, showing alternatives to keep the historic nature of the property intact, um, you know, uh, limit, limit the impacts to the existing parcel, you know, the memo from the Conservation Advisory Council, being able to address all their concerns in any resubmital, um, you know, the, the fact that, uh, you know, we have this contiguous development, you know, three lots, and then now an additional two or three, depending how you look at it, um, which would have met, uh, the need for a major subdivision because it was five lots, even though that may not have been the intention, just because of the way it worked out. I mean, we can have the authority to make sure that we at least review the, uh, downstream impacts, the drainage and everything as a result of, uh, the cumulative effect of, uh, of these subdivisions. So those are things that, you know, we'd be looking to see, uh, uh, from the applicant as, if the applicant, you know, continues to proceed forward with this application or any modifications of this application. So we'll have to address all those.
So, so one thing I was having a little bit, I wanna do some more research, but I didn't get a chance to. What rights does the historic aspect of the property have?
I mean.
So what rights does the carriage house have?
Oh, Rob can jump in here, but I think a majority of that is governed by the fact that we have the ability to review subdivisions in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, and the historic nature of properties is outlined in the comprehensive plan in multiple places, and actually, there's a bullet point that says it's up to the town to protect historic properties, we're not relying on the state. Um, so I think that's where the value.
So what defines property? The house itself, or how much of the property that the house sits on? Where, where does the boundary of historic property get defined?
So, so I don't have an answer to that issue yet, um, but historically, the property, so if you look at what the prior applicant brought in, the three lots that were subdivided off already actually showed at one point on a prior, um, plot of that street as their own lots, and that was the, one of the arguments that Rebecca Holmes made.
Mm-hmm.
To support her claim for subdivision.
Right.
This property was not, though. This was one, one lot. Um, so the short answer is, I don't know if we're ever gonna find that type of definition. Um, I guess one of the things that I'd like to say about what's different about this property compared to other old properties in Niskunis is, it's actually referenced in some of our historical data, um, and, and reports, so, um, you know, we don't have anything more formal than that, and frankly, that sort of helps the people who want to preserve this as historical, right? If we had something more formal and it wasn't on it, that would be problematic.
So, so I mean, that's, I think it's that line of thought that I'm going down here. We, look, it was, being one of the people that were there when Rebecca Holmes created that subdivision in the first place, it was clear to me that the three lots that were created could have been created, and there was a precedence for them, right? We, we had that discussion, but there was never any intent on my part, like, I'm not gonna speak for the board, that that first lot was ever gonna be anything but a single one, right? So that's one thing I think that's clear. The second thing then is, is there a way to call that entire lot what's historically preserved, and that's gonna be our line of argument?
Yeah, we can, and we can look into that too, because, um, I mean, we'll have, our next, uh, planning board meeting is at, is, we moved it a week because the February break, so that we wouldn't be meeting during February break, so we can look into property versus house for you.
I mean, there's gotta be, in the definition of historical site, there's gotta be some extent of it, right? Beyond just a single building. It's not like, you know.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, we can definitely, I mean.
But maybe how.
Find some guidelines on that.
It may be how the town sees it, right? But we've got the, we've got the authority to determine that, right?
So the one map, I don't know if it's in your packet, the old one from eighteen sixty-six, it actually clearly shows the house and the carriage house, this one. It shows both structures.
The house is clear there.
Yeah, so.
Let's. I, I think whoever's got the right expertise needs to.
So we reached out to the town historian, he was actually willing and able to come to the planning board meeting tonight, um, since the applicant wasn't here, I didn't wanna have, you know, too much discussion about the applicant, but he has put in on his calendar to come on the twenty-ninth, so he might be able to answer some of your questions as well.
In the, uh, recommendation from the CAC, though, um, in their review, they do allude to the importance of the layout of the historic.
Mm-hmm.
Buildings on the, on the parcel as, as part of, part and parcel of the, of the historic nature of the property as a whole.
Yeah, they were clear about not just the carriage house, but the trees and the property itself, yeah.
And, and they also allude to, uh, in many, in many instances, a concern of increasing the density of this parcel.
Yep.
And by relocating the carriage house, I would argue that that, that does.
Still relevant, yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
I, it, it's, I, I mean, for me at least, I think it's probably a very logical path to go down to establish just the historical nature of that lot.
Yeah.
the density of this parcel, and by relocating the carriage house, I would argue that that, that does...
Still relevant, yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
It, it's, I, I mean, for me at least, I think it's probably a very logical path to go down to establish just the historical nature of that lot.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll look into that a little bit more, and then we'll get you guys the additional information we were given tonight, and I apologize to the public that the application was tabled at the last minute, but please keep eye on the website. I mean, we're expecting it to come back on the 28th, 29th? Thank you, Jeff. Can't survive without our assistant planner. So, we'll just keep working away on it.
Yep, that's all we can do right now. See what, you know, again, we haven't reviewed the, the letter yet from the applicant's attorney, we'll take a look at that, and we'll see what the next, next move is, I guess, by the applicant, where they wanna go. We'll take it from there. That's all we can do.
But we are expecting a revised plan.
I don't think necessarily, I mean, I, I think that, I don't think it's clear what to expect at this point. They may, you know, go forward with the request that's in front of us, and if they don't get a decision that they like, then revise it, or alternatively, they could bring an Article 78 if the decision they didn't like, and then if they weren't successful at that, come back with a different one, so.
I don't know.
And, and those are all the applicant's rights. I mean, I, I don't want to, I mean, that's, that's his right to do.
Have, have we ever approved anything that had this much, where the CAC had a positive, had a positive recommendation, where the, there were concerns expressed about historic...
I guess we can start by saying, it's rare for, and for us to have a situation where there's a recommendation for positive declaration, okay? That, we don't go down that road a lot. That decision, if the planning board were to address seeker, that would normally be done when we call for a public hearing. If this, if, if the planning board followed the Conservation Advisory Council recommendation for a positive declaration and issued a positive declaration, what that would trigger is further inquiry, instead of having an environmental impact statement that addressed everything, would be likely that you could pick the issues that you wanted to have a scoping session as to, to see, you know, how the applicant could address those historical issues. So, it would change the process from what we normally deal with. So, so I don't want, I, I sort of wanna discount your question by saying, we don't normally even start on this procedure, and normally, we don't get an opinion, a seeker recommendation from the CAC so early, it's just, this has been kicking around for a while, so they had enough time and information to make their recommendation way earlier than this board was willing to call for a public hearing. Normally, those would happen closer in time.
I mean, process-wise, we, I think we're within our right to view this as a major subdivision.
Yeah, you can.
And hold it to those standards, but the applicant can actually fulfill all the standards for a major subdivision if they go down that path.
Um...
So, or I would expect they'd be able to.
I mean, that, I mean, that's a, like a nuance, so like, if you guys, we're generally speaking okay with the sketch plan, so sketch plan is the first hurdle, right? You have, you have to look at the sketch plan, I think, you know, there's a variety of things that you review for sketch plan, and classification, you actually, because you haven't gone through sketch plan, haven't formally classified it as a major or a minor yet, but if you were generally speaking okay with the layout and the, you know, the other pertinent...
I think it's actually more important to talk about the process than the conclusion, so that, that we don't box ourselves in further down, and the record doesn't show that we've predetermined a conclusion before the applicant has had a chance to present all their evidence. So, let's, let's address the process, how it would go forward, rather than, so, so I think it's a real question, and I don't wanna dismiss, Jen, guess your question, I just don't wanna reach a conclusion on that question yet.
I, I agree with you, and I think my comments were strictly process-related, that, I know we have the right to look at this as a, as a major subdivision.
Correct.
And the applicant would have to respond with that process.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions at all? Okay. I think that's all we can do for right now, and we'll see where it leads. Anything else on discussion items, any questions for Laura, or anything else that we wanna talk about before we move on? No? All right, 'cause what we have is reports next, with the update on the neighborhood mixed-use review and the ODHAC parcel.
Yeah, I wanted to let the board know that Jeff and I were on site today, and there's actually quite a bit of topography on the site, that was like my main takeaway today, was there's, um, there is a lot of complicated little hills on that site. So, I, I mean, I agree with the comments from the public tonight, like getting consensus and bringing in people from all around and starting that planning process, I think we're all on board with doing that, and seeing what's there and taking an inventory of what's there, I think that's a really good idea, that was partly why Jeff and I were there And we do have some quotes from engineering companies that would be willing to help us, so I feel like we're to the point where we probably just wanna start organizing a subcommittee and, and inviting people to come and just start working on planning at, at that level. If, if you guys just wanna kinda think about setting a date and getting stuff out there, I think that's where we are at. I don't know if you guys had any other thoughts?
No, I think that's what we said we were gonna do next, and there was the resident from Schenectady, right?
Yeah.
The gentleman that did a lot of work, that wanted to participate.
Yeah, and I mean...
And...
I really just think reaching out to, you know, anyone we can get.
I think he has a lot of, he has a lot of input that he can give, so it was good to have him on.
Yeah, he really had researched the code, and I think that's gonna be really helpful.
So, we just need to set a meeting, I guess, and, and kick it off, right?
So, if you guys just wanna maybe think and talk amongst yourselves, and then send me a couple dates?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Laura?
I apologize for not having the Architectural Review Board on here, I know you guys had asked for it. It did get pushed back a little bit, so that we could work on some of the other things that were on our agenda tonight, but I'm hoping to have something e, potentially to email to you ahead of time, so that we can be circulating it and thinking about it, because we are starting to get a fair amount of building permits, so I don't really wanna miss the window of opportunity for this construction season, so that is at the top of my list of things to get done.
Right, and that was discussed at the economic development, historic preservation committee, that there was some comments there, right? And David came in and gave his presentation, which was very nice, and just some cleanup, right? And that's pretty much where it's at, just it would go to Town Board, it looks like, sounds like in May sometime?
Yeah, there is a provision that we had written into it initially, that said that no work can be offered to those by the architects, to the people that are...
Right.
Yeah, we do have a provision in there, but, you know, we can relook at it, too.
Yep.
We do have something like that in there.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else? Any questions for Laura or anything? No? That'd be a quick night then, anything in Commissioner's business, Mr. Oster?
Nothing.
Sir Diopino?
No.
McPartland?
No.
DeCon?
No.
Do you ever get any inquiries over the adaptive reuse of the old Walmart building?
Sadly, no, but it's sort of a run, running around ideas from staff that works at the town, town hall sometimes, Trader Joe's.
But we've already, we've already discussed before that Walmart continues to pay rent on that property.
Exactly.
So, the owner has no incentive to...
You know what, it could even, even...
How, how do we know that?
Um, well, I actually have never actually seen that, but I, you know, sort of...
Can we verify?
Yeah, we could verify it.
That's a pretty bold assertion, I, I'm just saying, it seems like...
Well, they've said it before, so you're right.
Because you know what else? I think Walmart even subleases to those Halloween stores, I mean, you could definitely still use it. No, I haven't gotten any inquiries, but I'll research that.
Because if, if that's not the case, then I think we probably need to have a conversation with the owner.
Absolutely. In, in that, just in that vein, what about the Balltown Road, the old, is it, was it Merrill Lynch? No, what was the...
Uh, Morgan Stanley.
Morgan Stanley. What's happened to that, what's the status of that property?
Well, I think Morgan Stanley has moved out maybe, I'm gonna say like seven or eight months ago.
Yeah.
It's not too long, and it has been on the market for sale, and we do get inquiries on that building.
You, you get inquiries?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But I've never gotten an inquiry on the Walmart building. But you know what I heard? It's, it's something like 40,000 square feet or something, and it's a really odd number for a retail. So, there's only a certain set of like box retail stores that can do that, one of them was Toys R Us, and I think you guys all know that Toys R Us is...
No more.
Right? Because it's not, it wasn't a true Walmart supercenter, it's a very oddly, it's an odd square footage for, it's too small for most of the big box stores that you're looking at, and then it's actually too big for the smaller things. So, there was just like a little niche, and like Toys R Us, and like those Walmart shopping centers, and there's like maybe one other thing that can do that, that size, but it is a really odd size for things to move in, which is why I was thinking, those Halloween stores pop up, but they're seasonal, and obviously, that's not like the most attractive store in the town.
Trader Joe's is gonna move into weird sizes.
Yeah, but Trader Joe's is a different size, too, but I think we might be too close, but I've had multiple staff members come over and be like, why can't you get a Trader Joe's in there? Well, I don't, I don't own the building, but, but yeah, there's definitely ideas, I mean, people definitely notice it and care, but I think it is a tough space to fill.
I mean, look, we got down the pipeline, the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, too, and...
Yeah, and, you know, yeah, yep. Which I think we sent out, and we were sending out to you guys the, you know, we talked about this already, the Colony Comm Plan is saying that you may just start losing your big box stores, you just can't handle the e-commerce now, so it's probably really a good time to be looking at what adaptive reuses of commercial buildings you can really look at.
Newhouse Road.
If you guys got any ideas, we can band together, call the owner.
Park a whole bunch of food trucks.
You know...
Galleria 8.
So, like, I don't know if you guys ever go to Flight, or like, you know, Billy Bee's or any of those places, but they're like in these really odd...
The old trampoline park?
Yeah, they're like these really odd, you know, tucked away little things, but those places do amazing business, I'm telling you, like, I'm trying to get a partner.
Listen, you always have a place to have like birthday parties, and that's, yeah, yeah.
It's in a good space.
Yeah.
I'm thinking about it all the time.
Thanks, Laura. Anything else, Mr. Sturtevant?
Thanks.
Mr. LaFon?
Yeah.
Okay, I have nothing further. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Mr. Con, and I'll second that. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
So, this...
This is empty, right?